We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Oh, yeah.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll now move on to roll call.
Councilmember Hall?
Here.
Councilmember Mizony?
Here.
Councilmember Palfini?
Here.
Councilmember Tavallaro?
Here.
Mayor Parham?
Present. All right. You have the acceptance of agenda and urgency items. We entertain a motion to accept the agenda as it is.
I'm moved to accept the agenda as is.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Now, we have a non-agenda public comment. Do we have any public comment for any items that are not on the agenda? Seeing as there is none, we will move on. Councilmember announcements, meeting reports, and comments. And we'll start today with Councilmember Hall.
I don't have much to report, Mr. Mayor. I've been spinning a lot of plates. Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Mizony?
Um, I, oh, I don't have much to say on this one, so.
Okay.
Not yet.
Councilmember Tavallaro?
Um, yeah, I have a couple things. We had a LTC meeting, which is a local transportation commission meeting. And clearly, as we can all see, anybody who's been on the freeway, construction season is here. There we have winter and construction season. So, it's going to be a mess and just leave on time. Then, another good thing that's kind of happening is with the stage. We are in the process, this LTC group commission, which is three council members from the county, three city people and three county supervisors. We will be taking over the stage. There's still going to be the people that are running it. And we are in the process of working on a new schedule. So, we're hoping that we have, within our community, buses running so that people can get to, maybe to school, maybe to the food bank, maybe to the movies in Mount Shasta and back in a timely manner. So, that schedule's being worked on. And there's actually a young lady coming from UCLA who has her degree in transit, in transportation, and is coming to take a tour of the county. And that's in May. And I'll be driving her around our community.
That's scary.
Huh? So, if there's any place that any of you think that the stage should be stopping, the food bank, the schools, the colleges, obvious, let me know. So, I can take her to those places and see if she can get those in our routes that we would like to have. The other thing is, I got this today, and there's a, this flyer is out there on the board. They're going to have this cemetery cleanup day for Wyneema and Lincoln Heights Cemetery on Saturday, May 18th. So, that's a month away. We can all mark our calendars. Nine o'clock in the morning. Any help, they'll greatly appreciate. I think they usually like you to bring a rake or anything you have that can help. Sometimes a weed eater helps. But that's May 18th at nine. And then, this Saturday at 8:30, the Weed Rotary Club is meeting and will accept all help down behind Taco Bell?
Yes.
Our same spot, behind Taco Bell in South Weed. And we will be doing the cleanup down there. And Solano's usually also kindly donates garbage bags for us. And I think the garbage company usually donates the garbage can dumpster for us to put it in. And so, that's 8:30 this Saturday in South Weed. And I think that's all I have.
Nine o'clock?
Eight thirty for you. Nine o'clock for the other people.
All right, Councilmember Palfini?
Uh, not a lot to report on myself. Everybody here went to Lola. I'll let you do the honors on Lola, right, for last night. I do have, as part of, one of the groups I belong to is the Resource Centers, and we are having Kids' Day on 4/20. It'll, it kind of runs, not kind of, it does run concurrent with the Spring Day, although we will be looking for a crowd of probably five to 10-year-olds on our event. So, I don't think we should have too much conflict, and we will send the parents down when they're done. Other than that, that's, oh, I want to thank Public Works. They did bring water for us so I don't have to put my truck down to the springs. Thank you very much. And that's it.
All right, well, I'd like to thank Mount Shasta for hosting the Lola Dinner last night. Also, I want to thank the entire council from the City of Weed for showing up. We are one of the few groups that generally brings most, if not our entire council, and several staff members to each of those meetings. So, it's good to represent our community, you know, strongly in those respects. A lot of interesting things going on in the county. Would like to definitely echo the cleanups for South Weed this weekend and for the cemeteries coming up in May. Having participated in some of those in the past, it's really helpful when we have all hands on deck. And I know that not everybody can make it every year, but definitely appreciate it when people take pride in their community. And that's, uh, that's it. That's all I've got for this month, so.
Mr. Mayor, regarding the Lola Dinner last night, something, I don't know if this is a time to talk about, we don't ever talk about Lola much, but I'm just thinking, you know, the reports that those different communities make, I mean, there's so much information that we hear. It'd be really nice to have that somewhat consolidated, your ringleader with the Lola, right?
Sure.
Could that be, you know what I mean? If everybody gave a copy of their report, we'd take them back to, you know, myself, I belong to a couple of groups that'd be interested to have all that information in the county. I mean, because that's, that's quite a bit of, we don't have a newspaper anymore, you know, that's.
So, I think a good opportunity for that would be as we look at developing the new website for the city, that we put that information out there if that project moves forward so that that can be included with all the other updates, you know, so that not just our folks here in our community, but people from the county could access the information through the City of Weed website. So, I think that would be a good, I think it's a very good idea there to put on that, add that to it.
Yeah, a lot of information.
And because, just so people know, that Lola stands for League of Local Agencies, and it is four times a year, the city council members from each city, which there's nine of us, but McLeod and Lake Shastina districts were there last night, which was very nice. And we kind of talk, we usually have somebody speak, and then we talk about what's going on in our communities and what's happening. And then, we all talk about infrastructure, too, but we, you know, what's new coming in and that kind of thing.
Tulley, they explained, all, everybody is there. Who holds that Lola meeting? What communities are represented?
Oh, Tulley, Lake Doris, Wyrica, Weed, Fort Jones, Etna, um, did I say Doris? Yes.
Dunsmere?
Dunsmere, Mount Shasta, and?
Montague.
Montague.
Tulley Lake.
Tulley Lake, and then McLeod and Shastina.
It's a lot of information.
Well, wherever, wherever it is held, that supervisor is invited. And he did not, he was not there last night, but it's, in three months, it's his same district, so he might be there in July. He was going someplace. I saw him on Tuesday. He was going someplace. And it actually is elected officials, so we also invite the county clerk, the county district attorney. It's, it's pretty much for elected officials. They usually don't come, but the cities are usually represented. It's very nice.
All right, our next item is the consent agenda. We have any discussion on that outside of the work session?
Our motion to approve the consent agenda as written?
I would second it.
Okay, all in favor?
All.
Or, I'm sorry, public comment? We need a public for, for the agenda, so that was, that was nice. Very welcome. All right, seeing as we have no public comment, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. We have no items that were removed from consents, so now we move on to our public hearings. So, tonight, we have the CDBG closeout and resolution acceptance, and we'll go ahead and open that hearing now.
Do I give you guys these handouts?
Sure.
Okay, my name is Alicia, and I'm here with Great Northern Services. I'm the project coordinator with Great Northern Services, and I work with Brandy. Brandy was here last month discussing some of these grants that we're going to close out today. The purpose of this public hearing is so that the community has an, um, an opportunity to hear the activities that have been completed during the 2020 grant cycle under the State Community Development Block Grant, the CDBG program. The first one is the 21 CDBG PI 00004 AMR Water Meter Project. The public hearing will also be giving the citizens an opportunity to accept the engineer plans and specifications for the environmental interview, the environmental review for the 2020 CDBG 12053 Storm Water, I can't even talk today, Storm Water NEPA and Planning. The AMR Water Meter Project, the budget for that project for the CDBG portion was $257,252. Non-CDBG budget was $25,000. The project summary was to purchase new automated meter readers and software for the water services in the city. The meters were to be installed by the city staff as time allowed. The meters and the software allowed reading while only by driving by and without physically assessing. The results to date, there was 1,815 meters that were purchased, enough for the entire city. 61 of those actually got damaged in the mill fire. 70% were installed, and they were installed by the city staff. Currently, it saves six days in staff time for the meter reading. This allows the meters to be read during inclement weather and otherwise inaccessible meters. So, that's the closeout hearing for the Water Meter Project. Any questions?
Yep.
And good job to?
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Chris, or do you? Are they, we're done? They're all in?
Not currently. We are working on them as we get time. We still do have up there by the college area, just still do, and then the south end, and that's it.
So, like 50%, 75% are in?
70%. 70%.
70? Okay, that's good.
About 75% of them were installed. The delay was because of everything else. There was a delay on making them.
Getting them, yeah.
Getting the parts. So, there was a delay on that, and there, there is about 70% that is, that is completed.
But we physically have them. It's just a matter of who guys get them in.
That's correct.
Okay, cool.
And the second portion is the resolution for the Storm Water Planning Grant. This budget was for $225,000 for CDBG portion, and the non-CDBG portion is to be determined. This project was spoke about last month for the application that we're going to apply for. And this is to develop the plans and specification for the Storm Water Management Program to be addressed for the repeating flood program down on Main Street, Ripon area, Bull's area. The additional performance, the addition was to perform a NEPA and a SEQUIP Environmental Review for the proposed project. That has been complete, negotiation and obtaining the necessary easement and permits. The results today, the plans are done, the project has been completed, the NEPA and SEQA have been completed. Additional Phase Two Environmental Review and Identification is necessary and has begun. Most of the work required for obtaining the construction easement has been completed. The project, the permits for the project have already been obtained. The project will be ready to apply for construction funding later this year, which we've already, will be applying for that grant that Brandy spoke about last month, and we're ready to get those funds. It's, it's also a time for the community to make a comment about it and accept the progress. You don't pay anything for the community?
So, you would open the public hearing at this point to allow for a public comment?
All right, well, the hearing is now open. Do we have any public comment on the matter? All right, councilmembers?
I have self-explanatory if I could. So, what were you're reporting right now? They'll get mad I didn't turn on my microphone. So, what you're reporting now, right now, is that Great Northern has completed their phase of getting the project completed. The only thing I've got, I'm seeing left open is us completing the project.
The environmentals have been completed and the engineering plans, correct? Yeah, so, the Phase Two is still being done, some of the easement issues are still being handled, and permit, there's still a couple of permits that are outstanding. But all the permits that were necessary for the environmental assessments, those are completed. There's some other permits, because since we're working in an act of water management.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments?
Nice report.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much.
I should be able to tell the story now when somebody asks about it. Thank you.
All right, so we'll now close the public hearing and consider a motion.
I make a motion that the council passed Resolution Number 16-2024, accepting the plans, specifications, and engineer's estimate, and the environmental assessment funded by the Community Development Block Grant, 20 CDBG-12053, City of Weed, 2020 Storm Water Improvement Grant.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries by unanimous consent. Thank you very much. All right, now, we'll move into council business. Our first topic is public safety, an encroachment permit by a motion to consider the approval of the encroachment permit for April 19th and April 20th, the closure of Main Street from 0900 to 2300 hours to the spring fling, including the waivers of Weed Municipal Code 9.16.010 and 9.16.030 for outside sale and consumption of alcohol within the event boundaries only.
I think she wants to say something.
Well, I wasn't here, well, I missed it last time because you moved it forward, so.
And would you give us your name and address, please?
Oh, I'm sorry, Elizabeth Taber, 218, 242 Main Street, 203 as well now. I don't know if I was just supposed to maybe talk to Justin as far as the, when we did steampunk the year before, we did a two-day event. Lonzo stayed downtown and kind of watched everything as like security for vendors and stuff that left their booths and everything up, and we can provide that this year.
Okay, so, the, as far as that goes, the closure, it's not a concern of watching the items. That's fully upon the event organizers. The closure is, they've asked for a closure from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. each, or overnight would open up. Staff recommendation is that you not open the roadway and just make it a full 38-hour closure if council so chooses because of the safety issues of having, whether it be vending booths, food booths, tables and chairs sitting in the street with traffic going through. That's the recommendation. It's not an issue of overnight security. It's just if you want to have a closure for two days, you know, council's decision to do so, but I would not recommend opening the street up if items are going to be left on the street just for liability and hazard purposes.
Right, so, we do have the ability to have someone there to make sure there's no theft or anything like that, or option, another option could be maybe move one side of the street to the other and put a couple barricades overnight so police and fire could go through Main Street and then put those booths and barricades back up the next morning.
So, I reviewed the application pretty thoroughly. One of the requirements is that we do maintain a fire lane throughout the entirety of the event, for any event on Main Street. So, I'm in agreement with Chief Mayberry on this, that we should consider a closure for the entirety of the festival just to mitigate any potential harm or hazards that could arise from opening the street. I think that would allow, you know, the event to move forward smoothly for all the participating artisans and musicians, as well as to make it safe for our citizens or visitors through our town to not have to worry about the hazard and just, well, you know, consider the closure.
Okay.
But that's my singular opinion.
Well, you do business right downtown, so your opinion matters on that.
Right, so, but we will have on-site security, so that way, I mean, if worse times are worse, they can call you back.
I do appreciate as an event organizer that you were looking to provide security. Our police department has done a fantastic job over the years doing security for many organizers' events, but it's very much appreciated that you've taken that into consideration.
I don't think they have staffing for this, though.
So, that's, we encourage all of our different event organizers to provide security when possible, to not tax our city resources.
Mr. Mayor, also, I think, you know, that the time, we're talking about 11:00 to the next morning, I mean, there's not going to be that much traffic. It's not, it's going, it's already going to be closed.
That would be my only question to the chief, is, does that put an undue stress on traffic? Because we're limited, Grove Street is kind of tiny.
All, all the streets are limited, but as Councilman Hall has stated, that's a low activity time of day. From 11:00 to 9:00, you couldn't, you know, couldn't ask for a better time if you're going to leave it closed to do that, because from 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. is typically the high-volume time.
So, it'll be, it would be just the Friday night?
Yeah.
Everything's going to be gone by Saturday? And will the things be set up so that in the case that there is something, a barricade could be moved and the fire truck and the police car could go down the middle of Main Street, only one lane? Or they could come back?
Yeah, last year, after the event was over, because we put tents up and tables, we kind of took up the whole street. And so, after talking with Steve and Tim, we kind of know now to kind of shift everything more to one side, so if something like that were to happen, they can?
Get.
Come up that far side to get through by just sliding two barricades over.
Right.
Yeah.
I don't have a problem with that. If you don't mind if your business doesn't have people driving by 11:00 at night?
Yeah, I, we're not open at 11:00 at night, and I think it's for the betterment of the community that we have the music and artisan fair than my individual business.
Well, and if I was setting up a booth that was going to be open Friday night and Saturday, I would not want to have to take the whole thing apart and then put it back together Saturday morning, which is what would have to happen if we don't say to leave it closed, correct? They have to take everything off.
Yes, that would be my recommendation, because it's just, just the, even if you say you left a table and chairs out there, the invitation to Joe Public walking by to sit on that table and chairs and a car comes by, not realizing that traffic is flowing, it's just, it's too confusing, yeah.
So, do we need to change this?
I think we should consider heavily amending this to include the full closure if we're going to consider a motion here.
I will make that motion that we close it from?
Why don't we, why don't we finish discussing all the items and then get some public input, and then we can come back and craft the motion.
On just this one?
This and the alcohol, I think is the other.
Yes, and so, the other, the other consideration here is the waiver of the municipal code to allow sales and consumption of alcohol within the event perimeters during that timeframe. And do we have any public comment in regards to any of the above with the potential closure and the waiver of the municipal code for the alcohol consumption and sale?
What if, the question, what if they're drinking at 11:00, or is it still open consumption at that point, or is?
Well, if you're going to have a hard closure from, for 38 hours, I would consider that still within the event boundaries. The event may not, may not be participating. The only, only concern would be either the store that has a liquor license, somebody consuming, which they wouldn't be allowed to do during the event hours. The store can't sell alcohol and have them go out and, and, yeah, they can't do that.
And neither can a bar?
And the bar can't have, at any time, have anything come out of that business.
There goes my solo cup, or?
So, it shouldn't be a problem, because they're not allowed to do that.
Anyway.
Yes.
Anyway, yeah.
I'm good. All right, any other questions from the council or staff?
It's finally a weekend.
Yeah, finally, huh? Six years. This is six years, finally. Yeah.
Okay, so, we'll amend it. We don't have to amend anything for the outside sale, just amending for the time of the closure will be from, what time is that starting on Friday? Five is the closure?
9:00 a.m.
Oh, 9:00 a.m. on Friday? Oh.
You'll notice, you'll notice in the packet that there's actually two event maps. That's because?
Right.
The Friday allows for the ingress and egress out of U.S. Bank.
Okay.
And then, it will move all the way up to the division intersection on Saturday.
Okay.
If they, if they chose, yeah.
Okay, so, my, my amendment is that they can keep it for the, how many hours? 38? 38 hours closed in the designated spots that have been on the map. Is that enough, David?
Yeah, do you also want to, do you want to include the?
Waiver.
The waiver of the alcohol consumption requirement?
What's that going to change?
Well, you want to include that in your motion.
You're including that in the motion?
Oh, okay, yes.
As a separate item.
But it's not changing, right?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Have to approve.
Yes, all that, yes, that whole motion.
Okay, so, we have a motion for an amended event encroachment permit closure for the entire 38 hours, including the waivers of the municipal code for sales and consumption of alcohol within the event boundaries. Do we have a second?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Hope everybody enjoys the spring fling. It'll be nice to get out of the house and spend some time.
In the spring.
Hopefully, the weather will cooperate. All right, our next item, Item B, Administration by Motion, Council Will Consider Entering Into Contract for Information Technology Management Services with Network One.
Yep, Mr. Mayor, council, the city, as you know, severed our contract with Garland back in the summer of last year. We hired Apex for our IT services on temporary contract until we could fully send out a request for proposals. We had three proposals that were sent back to us. Staff sat down, reviewed the proposals, and after a lot of deliberation, selected Network One as the new provider. So, the improvement, the recommendation from, for the council is to approve the agreement for the IT management services with the City of Weed and Network One, starting with the date of May 1st, 2024. I will tell you, we have Kale Weston with Network One here tonight, the president of Network One, if you have any questions for him.
Councilmembers?
Cost, we don't have anything for cost on here. I agree with that. Do we have a? I agree with that. Do we have a...
Yeah, it's in, is it in the packet?
It was in the packet.
Was it?
It was in there.
What was the, what was that cost?
Oh, sorry. She said she emailed it to you guys.
Today?
The cost?
Yesterday.
The one this morning?
Yeah.
I received it this morning.
Okay. That's for the three-year cost.
I didn't get the email today.
The, the monthly cost on this is about sixty-three hundred. And the overall contract value itself is what, what we're worth, what we're supposed to put. If it goes for the full three years, which we hope it does, right, Kale, uh, is two-hundred-and-twenty-seven thousand, one-hundred-and-sixty dollars.
A year?
No, 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 for three years, for all three years.
Seventy-two thousand dollars a year.
Yeah, it's about seventy-two and some change each year.
For my knowledge, what's the difference between Garland and this as far as money?
I'd have to go... Yeah, Garland was pretty close to this. Their, their, their submittal back last summer, I want to say was around six, somewhere around there. So they had gone up substantially.
I just don't recall looking at the budget exactly what it was.
He, he phased out fairly early out of the budget the last summer, so.
Okay, thank you.
Were your, were your, sorry, were your three proposals close?
Yeah, yeah.
In cost?
Pretty close.
I mean, there wasn't one that was two thousand dollars less than the other one?
No, no. I, 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 as I stated before, the big deciding factor for us is the fact that we had four technicians that lived here in Siskiyou County that could be here, um, quickly, and that's important to us, yeah.
Being in America, what's the need?
Didn't, didn't City Park have experience with, who, who is this, Park and Recs?
I believe you guys use Network One. Is the Parks and Rec?
Parks and Rec?
Yeah.
We did for, yeah, for about five or six, uh, five years, we, we designed all the IT at the community center.
Can you come to the audience?
Yeah, we, oh, I haven't seen what it is. Yeah, so Network One designed and installed and owned most of the IT at the community center right up until the end of December of this year.
Oh.
Did it directly with ISP for the internet and then some of the local internet service.
Yeah, okay.
But yeah, we were there for about five years, and we used to do the City of Weed a long time ago under the name Acme Computer. So we actually started in Mount Shasta.
Okay, so Acme was...
Acme Computer is Network One, yeah.
Rec Center.
Well, it was Network One. I think we changed, I think we changed the name in two thousand seventeen.
Okay.
So it was before we started at the Rec Center. But we started in Mount Shasta in two thousand four. We're based now in Wairika, but we're also all over the US and Canada now as well. So it's a pretty decent-sized organization.
Okay.
And we're glad to have the opportunity to come back, so.
So, um, we have clauses. If we're not happy, well, we can bail?
It's a thirty-day termination.
Yeah, we have a thirty-day, we have a thirty-day termination.
Okay.
Um, we, we're starting to utilize, um, the Colontuno firms, um, professional services agreement. So everything will be a little bit more uniformed, but that is in there, yeah. So if something, like a situation we had with Garland happened, we can, we can bail out a thirty-day notice.
Okay.
We don't want that.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I'll make a motion that we enter into the contract for IOX.
Yeah, do we have any public comments on this item now? All right.
I'll make a motion that we enter into considering, we enter into a contract for information technology management services with Network One.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Now we'll move on to item C, Fire Department by motion. Council will consider authorizing the Weed Volunteer Fire Department to submit a grant application for the CalFire volunteer fire capacity grant, which is a fifty-fifty match.
Yep, this is a grant we apply for every year. The max that you can get per entity is twenty thousand dollars. We pay ten for any kind of equipment that we may need, and we'll go for radios this year, so we're asking to permission to write that grant.
May I ask a question?
Yeah.
Please.
Is this a, is this got guaranteed? Do you get it?
No.
Nope?
No. And they, they don't have to give us twenty thousand either. They could reduce it. One year they did reduce it a little bit. It depends on how many people apply and how much they apply for.
Oh.
So that's the maximum?
That's the max is twenty grand per entity, yep.
Any other questions from council?
Where, where are we proposing to get those funds from?
I have, it's in my budget. Ten thou, I put ten thousand in the budget every year of our portion.
Okay.
And then the ten thousand comes from CalFire.
Okay. All right, thank you. Just so the public knows that we're just not pulling it out of our wing here, okay?
Any public comment? All right, seeing as there is none, I will, well, we have public, so I'm, you know. There, there could be a comment. All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion that we authorize the Weed Volunteer Fire Department to submit a grant application for the CalFire volunteer fire capacity grant, fifty-fifty match.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, on item D, Fire Department by motion. Council will consider the Weed Volunteer Fire Department's recommendation to release a request for proposals to build a type-three fire apparatus.
Yeah, so that type-three, we have the chassis, we bought the chassis. And if you look behind you, this is not the truck, the actual truck, this is a truck that, um, it would end up looking like. We have a short video. Obviously, we can't do that, they're type-one.
Yep.
They started that.
Yeah, I think they did, too. They could have. It might, it might have been a stage fire, yeah. Probably a control.
Nice, straight line.
But there's a, they have a, that's just one company that builds them. Um, you know, we're going, we just went... We're at three-quarters of a tank.
How much water is it going to hold?
Five hundred gallons. How many gallons it gets? So you've got five minutes.
You've got five minutes. Better make it quick.
You've got five minutes until you hook up our water center.
And don't, isn't, isn't the money you bought a four dollar?
It's a four dollar, yeah.
Yeah, okay, that's what I thought.
This is just an example.
Yeah.
Um, you know, just to show you what it looks like.
I mean, the terrain's going to be a lot different there than it is here.
Of course.
And so will that be able to just put a fire at and retrieve it forty feet up?
Yeah, of course. We'd be able to respond that to anything, any kind of fire. If the sleepers are there by themselves without a driver, they can take that truck to a fire and start putting out a fire. House fire, car fire, wildland fire, anything. Instead of waiting for a driver to get to the station to take the truck.
It'll be nice to be able to immediately dispatch somebody from the firehouse instead of waiting for an engineer to arrive.
Correct.
Is there going to be foam on it?
Foam.
Foam?
Yeah, there's twenty-five gallons of foam. It's a type-three requirement, so you have to have, right, GPM pumper, that's five hundred. You have to have five hundred, you have so much water and so much hose, so it meets the standard of a type-three.
Now, this is...
However, a type-three, like CalFire's type-three, they're about five hundred thousand dollars to buy one of those.
Right. This is not one we'll rent out, will we?
We could, yep. Absolutely.
If I could, uh, I would offer one suggestion. We're, we're sending this out for an RFP. And when we fund it, it would be nice to see on a spreadsheet where, where, how we're paying for it. I think that would go a long way with all the council members as far as seeing the source of the, of the revenue.
I have it right there.
See? Good man. I like you already.
Every fire that we've made money on, I have it.
Okay, thank you.
Plus, remember, we sold Engine twelve-twelve for fifty thousand dollars, and that money is going towards that. Fifty thousand dollars of it right there.
Is, is there anything down there right now that the students can drive?
Ambulances.
Oh, yeah.
They can bring an ambulance to your house for a fire.
Okay.
Or a pickup truck.
Well, last time I had a fire, nobody came.
Yeah. And after this is built and put into service, we would propose to sell the ambulances, because you could probably get about fifty thousand dollars for it, maybe thirty. I also have, just so you know, for the pump and the tank, I have submitted a grant for that. So it would reduce the cost of the build by that, which is about sixty thousand dollars. I don't know if I'm going to get it, but I did apply for one, and our city qualifies for that grant. And there's no cost at all for it.
Who did you go through for that grant?
It's a, uh, gov.com or something like that.
Excellent.
So there would be no use for the ambulance after we have this?
Correct. We, uh, yeah, we'd sell it.
Wouldn't keep it for, there's no reason to keep it?
No. No, it was just the maintenance, maintaining it.
Out of all the pieces of equipment we've purchased in the Fire Department, uh, this one is probably the one that I, I like, yeah, the most versatile one I like the best, because it can get a fire out quick. And around here with the winds, that's huge, so.
Get some chrome tires on it.
Can we get a deer slayer on that? I'd like this one.
I don't think so.
Let's just go one step at a time here.
So I think the largest improvement for this equipment, for having a type-three, is the fact that any sleeper can respond with an appropriate vehicle to a fire immediately, uh, which is the purpose of having a sleeper program, so we don't have to wait for an engineer with a, a class B to arrive to run the engine, so.
And we did have one.
We did.
Right, that's what we had to get rid of.
And actually, there's a company in Medford that builds these trucks. They're going to bring one here to the next council meeting, so he can show you what it looks like in person.
Can we spray the water?
Yeah, sure. Drive it down the road.
That will have to be separately agendized, water spraying.
Water spraying, yeah.
We can't volunteer your car.
I'm going to let you lead the charge.
You can go with us.
About to bring turnouts for, uh, council use. So we have any public comments on the request for RFP on type-three?
Oh, you ready?
Well, seeing as we have no public comment, we are now ready to move forward.
Um, I will make a motion to recommend to release a RFP to build a type-three fire apparatus for the Weed Volunteer Fire Department.
I'll second.
All in favor?
I'll second, okay.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. We'll now move on to staff reports, and, uh, we'll start with Chief Duncan.
May I interject one time, Mayor?
Yeah.
I want to thank, the Weed Fire Department's going to be at Kids' Day, and I wanted to go to the Police Department, but your hands, I'm not sure if your hands are full or not, so.
It's time, but we're, we're planning on being there. We have actually, uh, we'll, I'll address that when we get there.
Okay, thanks. But thanks, Steve.
Sure. Um, well, we have, uh, we're doing a lot of inspections on buildings. We have, we're starting on Main Street here, going down this side of Main Street, and then we'll go up the other side, and then we'll hit South Weed. We have to inspect every building every year. Um, so our guys have been busy doing that, helping, um, training. They're actually training right now. Um, I don't remember what they're training on, sorry. But Brian's got them out training, doing something. Um, every Thursday night we do training. We did lose two volunteers. They did resign. They were in the AMT class and they didn't live here, so they weren't sleepers. Um, they actually lived at the college, so they moved back to where they came from, so. And we're just very busy, so appreciate it.
Are you looking to replace those, Steve?
Um, we're always looking to replace them, yeah. We have basically right now twenty, we had twenty-three volunteers, now we have about twenty-one. Uh, most of them actually work for CalFire, so. But they live here and they volunteer for us, but they do help out a lot, so.
Well, to take off my mayor's hat for a minute, as a business owner, I do want to thank you for the inspection. Um, it's always good to have an opportunity for improvement, um, and I hope all the other businesses in town see it the same way and make the improvements that are necessary.
And just so everybody knows, we started actually with the Fire Department. We inspected that, and we had to make some corrections. And a couple holes in the walls that we had to fix. We did the city council chambers, and Craig asked me if we could actually fix the mistakes, the corrections, because, um, their scout is busy with grants and stuff, so our guys have been down here fixing the things. And we did the library as well, because it's owned by the city, so he asked us to fix that as well, so our guys will be fixing that, too.
Excellent, all right.
What did you fix?
Uh, just like, you know, emergency lights, exits, plug covers. It wasn't anything major.
You fixed the roof?
No, that's, this is just life safety stuff.
Are you refilling, recharging the extinguishers, or do you do that?
Yeah, we, our company does it, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. In fact, they've been done here on the main charge. They should be done up there. They come up there already?
Yeah.
They should have come up there. We haven't inspected that building yet, but he did go do the extinguishers there. They did the extinguishers at the library, and, uh, so, yeah. Keeping them busy, for sure.
That's a good thing.
Do you take the students to do the inspections, or is it Usmaro and...
We take, um, Usmaro, either me, Brian, myself, Usmaro, and whoever else on duty, but, yeah.
Oh, wait, oh, so good.
We do take, we do take them.
Good.
I just assign a couple every day, if I can. It depends on our schedule, but we try to do two. On Tuesdays, we try to do at least two buildings, because it takes a little while. We did, we've gotten the doctor's office, the, the thing next door, the lab, and we're down to Mountain Market right now. We just inspected that one, so we're heading that way. We were sending the reports to Sandy. I haven't done them yet, but I'll get them to you, because we put them in their files, so.
Thank you for that. All right, we'll move on to our public work supervisor.
So right now Mike Peters is, um, wrapping up that sewer line, um, that went down White Avenue. That will, uh, they're putting in the pipe either tonight or tomorrow night. They're waiting for after-school hours to do that. Wakefield and Alameda got paved yesterday, and the utilities are, some of the utilities were raised up today as well with that, and they'll be finished with that tomorrow, as long as the weather holds out. Which that was the, um, part of the waterline project that went down Wakefield and Alameda.
Thank you.
It, it looks good, too, that, that, the new road.
You saw it? I didn't know it was there. Um, are you climbing across the highway? Are they going to repave on?
We are working on different types of fundings to be able to go ahead and get those roads paved as well. It's just, this was just specifically, um, the job that Sunrise did last, um, summer.
Well, no, I'm talking about the curbs and gutters for Wakefield.
So the curbs and gutters
And paved.
Were, that's always a work in progress right now.
Oh, I thought that's what you were doing. You told it was done.
No, that's the, um, just the asphalting of those roads are completed.
Okay, never mind. All right. It was on me. I was confused.
All right, Chief Mayberry.
So you may have noticed, uh, when you sat down, uh, the twenty-twenty-three Police Department annual report was provided to you in a hard copy. Uh, feel free to, uh, look at that, and if you have any questions, just feel free to ask. It's typically a, a more of a bi-annual, because it's, it's, I find it easier to compare two years. That way you can look for anomalies and things like that. As far as this year, we're about one quarter in, uh, to the, to the calendar year, uh, we're about, we're sitting at around, uh, six thousand two hundred and thirteen incidents. Um, more importantly, as far as public nuisances go, we're around, we're pushing sixty public nuisances uh, in various stages, either being closed or open, so getting a lot of, uh... input from the community on that. Animal calls are still, continue to be high. We're sitting at around 65 on those. That's affecting us in our animal control. Uh, we had, recently had a neighboring community that wanted us to take over animal control and just doesn't, I can't do it because we're sitting full most of the time. Out of the last 365 days, CSOs are telling me we had animals, at least one, but typically it's more than one sitting in the pound for 310 of those days. So, um, the collection of animals and the maintenance on them, to find them somewhere to go is, is becoming more and more costly.
Was that neighboring community going to help pay for some of that, maybe building a kennel?
Not in.
Yeah.
They, they had a very.
That'd be no.
They had a favorable deal with a, uh, with a animal organization, and that animal organization figured out that they were probably losing money on that, I believe, and, uh.
So would we?
Very large increase in the contract for them. So they're looking at options, and they asked if, we just don't have the capacity. It would, it would take adding more, uh, for us, more staff. So, just so council and the communities are aware, um, the community service officers act as animal control, they act as code enforcement. That's, that's part of their job. True code enforcement falls under the Building Department. They just take that upon themselves as well to help out, particularly with, uh, incidents involving vehicles. But we truly only have, when you, when you pencil it out, we truly only have one community service officer full-time. We have one full-time position that's, a lot of his time's taken up with evidence, which is, um, a number-one priority, especially when there's fresh evidence in there and he's working with the courts, he's got to focus on that, he can't be getting pulled away for animal calls or whatnot. And then our other full-time employee that does code enforcement, a community service officer, he's also a half-time dispatcher, so when you think about it, we only have one code enforcement person. With that many animals in the shelter for that amount of time, that's a lot of coming in on weekends, um, to feed animals. The, the, our facility's not readily available for somebody from a police officer to go out there, especially if there's only one on, to be through two gates out in a remote area, and then we get a call for service. It's just not, not a good idea, so. And then stepping away from that next week is National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, 14th through the 20th. I just want to say, if you have an opportunity, thank a dispatcher. Their job is vital to us, we could not function without them. We have, uh, staff now of two part-timers and four full-timers, and they do a very good job for the city of Weed. Community would not, cannot understand how different the service would be without them. So, they're, they're very vital to, to the service we do provide.
So you're full with dispatchers?
At this time, we are, yes.
I have a question on the animal control, Chief. Are a lot of these animals being dumped off here, or are these being brought from, say, Chastina area into this area?
Uh, well, it's hard to, you could say, yeah, because a lot of people tend to pick up dogs and bring them to us, even from outside the city. I've never seen a dog running down the road and about, pick it up and take it to the Police Department. It's just not something that I have thought to do, but that happens quite often, and some of them do come from outside the city. We have at times had to turn animals away. Just within the last month, I want to say last three weeks, we, we were at full capacity, and somebody brought in a pregnant dog, picked up, up by the college, and we were unable to take that dog, we had to refer them, you know, to either take it home, to take care of it, we, we had nowhere to place that dog.
So, is, uh, Humane Society, are they just as full as, as you guys are?
Humane Society is just as full. I don't have their numbers, but I do know they are full. Rescue Ranch, I was told about a week ago that they had around 200 canines.
Man, oh, man, that's just horrible.
And there is a cost, obviously with everything else, cost of food, cost of maintenance, everything's gone up.
And then one last thing, I, and, you have the, one full-time CSO, then a part-time, part dispatcher.
Yes.
So is there anything in the budget for future that may be able to allow another CSO? Or, I know we had animal control before, but.
There's nothing budgeted, so the, the city of Weed has used, traditionally used its cops allocation every year, which was, back in the day, would pay for two people. You know, times have changed, and that $100,000 doesn't pay for that fully. As well as we have a hard time filling those part-time dispatcher positions. So this was a way to have that part-time dispatcher available, and also to have part-time CSO, so.
That's too bad, but, I mean, I understand the times and how the cost of everything for each department is going up.
Well, and, and we're unique in that we use it for community service. Many agencies use it for, I've seen it purchase furniture or purchase, uh, you know, a vehicle or even salaries. It's not uncommon for officers, just because, you know, it's just where your priorities are. Prior to me, Chief Nicholas had established it, it was for community service officer program, and I've tried to maintain that to the best I could moving forward, because it is, it, it helps free up the officers for patrol, so that the animals and public nuisances are handled by, uh, the, uh, community service officers, and the evidence keeps, it allows me to separate that and not have a dispatcher do that. I have an evidence tech that does that, who is also a CSO.
Thank you.
I'd like to thank you, if I may. For, if you're gonna, if you're gonna show up at Kids' Day, I do appreciate that. I always like to have the kids introduced to law enforcement, so that, always a friend is, is a good way to put it for me. So, thanks.
So we are planning on being there.
If you can.
No, yeah, well, I mean, we are, besides that, on May 5th, there's Law Enforcement Appreciation Event up at Wyrica Campus, High School Campus. It's open to the community, we're planning on being there. We're hoping to have to, we actually kind of stepped it up a little bit, we've got our own Weed PD tent that we're hoping to have available by the Kids' Day. But, yeah, we'll be there as we always are.
Thank you.
Can I say one, one?
Well, one, one last thing, I'd like to actually thank all of the city and the council as well, because, uh, TOT does get contributed to the Kids' Day thing, so, thank you.
I just, I'd say, I appreciate you, this every year, this started back with Chief Nicholas was in here, you know, and I'd like to see other departments have something pretty similar to this. And, you know, because it's knowledgeable, it's, it's facts that you have in here, and it's a lot, it's a lot easier reading than just throwing me a piece of paper. And so I just think it's something that, just taking consideration that staff can do this, each department, Public Works, Fire Department, staff, so, but anyway, and I appreciate that, and thank you.
I'm saying that, just so you know, we do ours at the end of the year.
Yeah, that's fine, whenever.
We do it in conjunction with, with a fire warden, so they ask us to do it at the end of the year, so.
That, that's fine, it would be something, you know, it doesn't have to be a stick, but just something.
No, is it end of the fiscal year or end of December? In June? Oh, in December? And, back to Kids' Day, and if anybody here or has, in this room, has never been there, go to Kids' Day sometime, it's amazing.
And as the public may know, it's, it's free, so you can't actually pay for anything, which is kind of remarkable.
And the Weed Rotary Club will have free hot dogs.
All right, we'll move on to the City Clerk's report.
Yeah, report.
All right, and City Attorney.
Sure, I have just a couple things. As the City Manager mentioned, we have prepared a new suite of professional service agreements for the city, uh, based on the model that we use for all of our general council clients, so keep them regularly updated, and it, hopefully it will be a good resource for staff when entering into contracts, including for design professionals, for maintenance. We've also got some direction on a number of municipal code updates, uh, that we're going to be working on in the City Attorney's Office, so you can expect in the next few months to start seeing some, um, proposals to amend our municipal code. Also, I did attend a Legal Advocacy Committee meeting, Executive Committee of the Legal Advocacy Committee for the League of California Cities last month. That's where we work on the request for amicus support for different, uh, local governments throughout the state. And we are, there is planned the Spring City Attorney's Conference, which happens to fall on the next council meeting date. So depending upon what's on the next council meeting, once we see the agenda, if it's a light agenda, um, I may request to, to call in by Zoom so that I can attend the City Attorney's Conference. If, however, it's a heavy meeting, um, I'm happy to, uh, be here in person, as I always am.
Could we join you?
Wait a minute, where is it?
Rancho Mirage.
No idea, but we'll find it, it must be a good place.
Somewhere warm.
It's gotta be warm.
Dry.
Thank you very much, and on to the City Manager's report.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Council, I just have one thing. Our librarians wanted to, for me to remind everybody that on April the 17th at 11:00 AM, they're gonna be holding a, um, a, basically, as part of the Library LTC grant to improve, the $20,000 that we got to improve the ADA access, they have to have a public input meeting, so if people want to stop by and put their input on ADA access for the library, they're welcome to do that, so.
On the 17th?
On the 17th at 11:00 AM. Just, just for, you know, for our building over there, so that's part of the grant requirements. That's it.
Oh, I have a question, Tim. LTC, no. There's a walk audit?
Oh, yeah.
On the 24th?
Yeah. But that's by, is that, is that part of the Caltrans and the LTC?
No, it's part of.
Melissa Cummins with the county?
And the road.
Is the one we did a couple, like, the one we did a couple years ago?
No, not with the Caltrans project, no.
But this is with the, uh, the county, Melissa Cummins.
Yes, but it's also with a company out of Portland that is doing bike lanes and that kind of stuff, so it is here, and they're, they're wanting our thoughts on, um, routes to the schools, where kids walk, where people would bike, and it's here at City Hall on the 24th at 9:00 AM?
April 24th?
April 24th.
Okay.
Did you, did you know about it? Yeah. I'm still mildly confused as exactly what it is, but I'm hoping that when I show up, I'll completely understand it. But it doesn't have anything to do with construction that's happening in two or three years?
Is it planning? Another one of those.
Yeah.
Yeah, I love planning. There's also, I was looking at our emails, there was a, only because I've never been to a meeting, and I've been on the committee for god knows how long, of recycles, and I think it has to do with, uh, waste. Did you see that on there? From Siskiyou County Gov dot something?
Yeah, I, I think it's, I, I think I've seen the email, but I, I couldn't tell you the exact date.
They emailed it to me, I'm going, oh my god, they have a meeting. All right, I'll, I'll research it.
All right, well, we've concluded staff reports, we're now going to adjourn to closed session.
So we also do need to provide the opportunity to provide comment, public comment on the closed session items, which are property negotiation.
Our public that is now leaving, do you have any comment on our closed session items? Thank you, ladies. As we have no comment, we will now adjourn to closed session. We are.
Do we vote on it? I'm just kidding.
You're gonna vote on who brought their homework with them.
Your homework?
I've got, I've got mine in Sue's so far.
Oh, I'm supposed to give it to you?
Used to, everybody give them to you.
Yeah, I never thought about it.